Or, or adapted version if you would like a shortened version. It just acknowledges that it was posted.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Meeting of January 20th. It's currently 7:06 in the evening, and thank you for tuning in. My name is Joan Beely, I'm the Chairperson for the Planning and Zoning Commission. This meeting may be attended in person or by remote video or telephone conference. We have the Zoom conference access information that was provided for the Commission members, applicants, and other interested persons to participate, and notice on the agenda posted on the Town website. For those who are attending, I would ask that you mute yourself if you're able to do so, so we don't pick up a lot of background noise. It's very important, two reminders. First, every time you speak, you must state your name and title for the record. Second, you must be careful not to speak over one another so that we can hear each other and understand what's being said or proposed. And for this reason, when it comes time for the Commission members to comment and ask questions about a particular item on the agenda before any action is taken, and then to vote on that agenda item, our Town Planner, Maureen Juisty, will take the roll call. Also, the regular meeting is being recorded, and for those of you who are interested, it's going to be posted on the Town website, so there you go. So, I'm going to ask Maureen to please take the attendance for tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Okay, I'll start with John Michael O'Brien, who's asked the excuse. Sandra Capola. Diane Joycey.
Here.
Timothy Zigma.
Yeah.
Brian Rogan.
Here.
Steve Womack.
Here.
Chairman Beely.
Here.
Alternate Peter Zerbozo.
Here.
Alternate Andrew Legg Danny. And alternate Steve Biella Jr.
Here.
Okay, so Steve, you're online. All righty, we will need to seek someone for Mr. O'Brien. And let's go with, last time we had Mr., okay, let's go with Mr. Zerbozo, because last time we had Mr. Legg Danny and Biella. So, Mr. Zerbozo, welcome to the games. All righty, now that we've called the meeting in order, I'm going to ask for a review of the minutes for December 16th, 2021. And does anyone have any corrections or adjustments that need on the minutes? And if not, I'll adjourn. Okay, Mr. Zigma gets the motion for that.
A second, second by Ms. Joycey.
Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so move. We have the request for bond release. We have a request for David Manafort for bond release at O'Keemore Pines LLC, O'Keemore Pines subdivision, Drive. And... I believe that we had in our packet, okey dokey, it looks like...
Yeah, Jimmy said, yeah, the maintenance plan may be released. I'll make a book of motion to release the plan.
Okay, there you go. All right, thank you, Mr. Womack.
Senator Joyce.
Okay. Woman has the motion, Dorsey has the second for the discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. As opposed, so move. All right, on to the regular agenda here. And first up, we had a public hearing for the Little House Living LLC, but I believe that they have asked us for an extension on that, and they do not want to be heard tonight.
They have, they requested a postponement of the open public hearing and granting an extension.
Okay, all righty, and that's for February 3rd?
So, we'll carry it over to February 3rd, and then we'll notice it, depending on what happens.
All right, so do we have a motion for that?
A move.
Okay, Mr. Zigma, second. Ms. Joycey, for the discussion on that item, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, someone, I think I skipped something, didn't I? Yeah, go, let me slide out of public hearings, go back to new business and catch up with the Site Plan Amendment application of Kristoff, Kristasov, pick to manufacture products included, not limited to the precision machining and deburring of aerospace engine and structural components, components at 758 four, I wrote up. Maureen, I think you have a postponement request on that as well.
I did, I received a request to postpone that. They've had a closing delay and have asked to wait for the public hearing.
Okay, Mr. Womack, what do you say about that?
A motion to approve.
I, I'm purposely kicking off. Okay, so a motion to approve that we move it to February 3rd?
Yes.
Okay, I will second. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Womack, and thank you, Ms. Joycey, for the discussion on that. Mrs. Zerbozo, you agree with that?
I'm good.
Okay, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so move. Circling on back to the public hearings, we have the zone change request for 550 to 554 Burlington Turnpike Associations LLC to change the zone of map 10-2, block 83, lot 13B, 502 Burlington Turnpike, map 10-2, block 83, lot 13, 522 Burlington Turnpike, and map 10-2, block 83, lot 14, 5x4 Burlington Turnpike from the Burlington Turnpike 1, which is known as the BT1 Zone, to Burlington Turnpike Development to BTD. So, we had opened this public hearing, and we are, this is a continuing state of it, and yes, Ms. Womack.
That's fine. I want to remind you that B and C were combined for the purposes of the public hearing as one is the zone change request and the other is the special permit and site plan applications. But I also wonder if it would be appropriate, given that this will include a presentation in some time, if we should announce the requests you receive from the next application as well, the one later on the agenda for Stan Chem. If I go with it, Stan, Stan Chem has provided an extension to get them to a public hearing expected to be in March, March 3rd, after the conclusion of a wetlands hearing on this item. So, they've asked to be postponed and heard all at once, once they've gone through wetlands.
Okay, so...
With an anticipated date of March 3rd.
Okay, anticipated date, okay.
How do you feel, Mr. Womack?
Yeah, we're going to ask Mr. Womack how he feels about that. Mr. Womack, how do you feel about that?
I think that's right, I'll make a motion to approve for March 3rd.
Okay, you have motion, thank you, Mr. Zigma.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Joycey needs a second for the discussion on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, move. All right, so we're going to go back, and do we need actually motions to combine?
They're, they were already combined at the open public hearings, so I think it's just a continuation of the combined public hearings for items as listed as B and C on the agenda for all applications related to 550 and 554 Burlington Turnpike Associates.
Okay, terrific, so...
It's a leap of faith, but that's what I do.
You're just fine. Okay, what do you think?
Take control, and I got it.
What's your motion, Steve?
Okay, all right, so now we have Tony Sullivan with us this evening, and also Bart Ove, engineering, and I imagine you're both here for the same project.
We are.
Oh, excellent, welcome.
Tony Tom saw on behalf of the Apple from 550 to 554 Burlington Turnpike Associates LLC, ETA. Also attendance in person and virtually, Bart Ove, Brian Miller, and Mark Vertucci.
Okay.
Bart's the civil engineer, works, he working with call engineering and developed the concept at the time, I guess, call engineering. Bart has been involved with this property for a few years now. I'll give some history on that as well. But we view the, you know, combining of the properties of this master plan, protects the river and all the different site plan specifics. Brian was the author of the formal housing plan, he's here tonight to review that. Mark Vertucci was the author of the traffic impact study, and he's here tonight to review that. Bart, Bart and I are live from Council Chambers, and Brian and Mark are joining us virtually, I see they're both here. BTA owns property on the west side of Burlington Turnpike, just north of Woodlawn Road. It's 502, 522, and 554 Burlington Turnpike. 502, if we have to print here, but we don't go as far as, I'm not sure. 502 would be up here on the north side of this combined three-piece parcel master development. Good way to remember that parcel, as you're traveling south from an application review, from Denny Road, traveling south, you review for quite a period of time in the spring with ET 2008. Very similar proposal to this, this is on a smaller scale. Leave that property, you go buy town, the town pump house. Then there were a couple of ranch houses here, I don't know if anybody remembers back in like 1988. Old Wicker had a state headquarters there, state ride, well, these. Those, those are now gone now, but this would be where the retail property is right now. Those ranch houses are gone. The ABC Development is the next properties of South, which is actually next to every 722, the development of the housing part of this proposal. And then the third parcel would be 554, which is the ABC Supply Company.
That's all right.
The town water tank, he's over behind here. Obviously, the Matavassuk River is the western boundary of these properties. We also have the ever-source transmission lines. So, it's a challenging property. It sits down the whole, we both publicly, publicly utilities, and I stated as boundaries. Despite these challenges, my client and Bart have designed attractive mixed-use development along this corridor of the Burlington Turnpike that the plant conservation and development has identified as a housing corridor. And this would simply extend previous proposal that was, that was approved in the spring of DT 2008 of this type of development, which the plant conservation and development identified. The three lots that comprise the master plan aggregate to approximately 21 acres. 502, which is the front of Wicker Plant, is a lack of third word now. Has previous history, and Bart will explain this, there was a site plan and variance application for auto repair business a year back. Then you have the ABC Supply Company at 6.47 acres, and the housing proposal of 12.61 acres. Bart will be providing the set details of the proposal and the history. He also, this property was also subject to the wetlands application, and the pool. The proposed project is a type of mixed-use development contemplated by the Planning and Zoning Commission when it adopted a prolonged term like developing zone, the BTD zone. All three parcels are currently zoned, BT1, has seeked to develop the parcels under the BTD overlay zone. This requires a zone change application, a site plan application, and a special permit application. The application is necessary for the project as the same as the application is necessary for the DT 2008 mixed-use development in the north, same side of the road of the proposal, but just a smaller version of that project. As I briefly alluded to earlier, the proposal includes commercial, retail, and housing components. The housing proposal is for 106 units and three buildings, and includes an affordable housing set aside. Brian Miller will be addressing the, this in his report. The final presenter will be Mark Vertucci to address his study. Before turning it over to Bart, I just want to briefly address the third-party review dated January 11th, 2022, prepared by Town Planner Paul of Norman New York Plan and Design. Mr. Paul and Town Planner Maureen Juisty and Bart and I had a lengthy phone conversation in mid-December, and Brian Miller also revised his report to address Mr. Paul's concerns that Brian Miller had conversations with Mr. Paul as well. But based on our conversation, BTA, in that, in that phone conversation with Maureen and with Mr. Paul, we've acknowledged that there are aspects of the application that should be given further attention, and that's, and that's what we're doing now. We will be making revisions to this plan. We want to wait until Bob Bareshke of WMC Engineering, who's also a third-party reviewer, reviews our stormwater management plan. He may have suggestions, so we just want to make one, one revision. Hopefully, that would be the last revision. Earlier today, I submitted documents that support the application's written narrative about economic impact and impact on schools. These are in response to Mr. Paul's request for this type of information. It's important to recognize that Mr. Paul found that mixed-use development generally meets the requirements for approval. The BTA is committed to approving the proposal with revisions to the site design consistent with Mr. Paul's revision or question revisions. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Bart to get some site-specific information, and we can circle back.
Thank you, Tim, Bart Ove, AG Colwensons, Huntsville, the engineer. This was actually my first project I took over when I started my new career, working for Mr. Judas. And I followed this through, kind of brought it up to where I thought the town of Rome would be looking for approvals, opposed, just a general, well, I think we come up with a rather good plan. As Tim explained, it's basically three parcels about it, because our retail components are given from the Wicker property. There's a commercial, existing commercial component, which is the ABC Supply Company, and then there's our proposed residential area. We're looking for a zone change for these two parcels, which together are 21 acres in size. We did go through the wetlands commission process, rather lengthy process, and that was basically the start of all of it. We got, finally got our approval back in July of 2000 for our wetlands work. And I'll go through exactly what we did for well, because we kind of get above ourselves, but let me go over the three parcels. This parcel here, which is known as Lot 13B, it's two acres aside. As Tim mentioned, this was previously approved by the commission back in 2018. Yeah, 2018, this site was approved, basically with the same building. The only difference was it had an automotive repair component to it. We are not proposing an automotive repair facility, it's probably this, but we're proposing a small retail plaza in that location. The original proposal had a driveway system that connected to our front. We are now, we will propose to modify that, so we have access that for main driveway coming off the site. There's approximately 3,253 square feet of retail within that, and 17 parking spaces that received two variances as part of the approval process. One variance was from a setback standpoint that allowed that building to move forward due to floodplain issues within its property. And the second variance was for approval for this, for an automotive repair. Obviously, we don't need that variance anymore because we're not putting the automotive repair, but the, the setback variance was filed, and so that's, those were the land records that we're proposing, putting that building in that receipt that has its own stormwater management to the north of the property, and pretty much a self-sustaining, but we are proposing tying this now in for a larger facility. The second part is the ABC tool, now the supply. If you know the site, there's a kind of a Y entrance. That cars kind of come and work out, and then rather large Y where the trucks accelerate as they leave. What we're going to do is we're going to abandon this entrance here, and we're going to combine, have a single driveway entrance for all three facilities that's located in this location. This location comes through, comes along the river over here, comes to the back and serves our three buildings in the back, but also, we're going to create a new entrance here so the trucks can come into the storage area, and we've appropriated the parking that was originally there for the original facility to replace with 35 parking spaces for this facility. We've estimated that the two buildings combined have about 66,000 square feet of, of the space of an office in the front area, there's some storage area here, more storage to the back of the site. Again, 35 parking spaces will replace the existing parking that we're losing with the reconfiguration. This is going to, this is going to prevent these trucks down from the parking area and allow the trucks to make a safe, continuous movement into the storage yard and have the parking separate, so it's going to be a much, much safer layout. That property comprises about 6.57 acres. And that includes, we, within this area. What we're proposing then for the remaining area, which is approximately 12.6 acres, is to construct three buildings. It looks, there's a, let's see, there's a, two four-story building and three-story building that are located, they would contain 106 units, and I'll show you an elevation to what that will look like in a second. But to do all this stuff, we have to do a lot of work because, as Tim mentioned, the Matavassuk River runs around the corner of the property back to it. What happens is...
Bart, excuse me for a second. You said 106 units?
106 units, rest in peace.
So, the 28... So the twenty eight units, any building is wrong, six way?
Yeah, that's wrong. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just to answer, if you look on the master plan, I think that represents it.
Um, but with the with the river, there are both end of the wetlands and especially floodplain issues. In fact, the floodplain line comes into the parking area for the ABC supply. So what we've done is, with the blessing of the commission, is fill up this area around here. So this driveway is now out of the hundred year flood. It doesn't create a condition where you could have flooding in the river blocking out the homes. And what we've done is proposed a stormwater mitigation area that's located in this little figure, kind of creating a a new wet or a new meadow area along the river, kind of replicating, we've got a sort of old documents that show that that area was cleaned there clear at one time. So we're proposing removing the fill from that area to compensate for the uh, the flooding that we're looking to uh, to uh, eliminate. That will allow uh, seasonally will allow more nuisance storms to flood within that area and will not take the higher level flooding to deal with the areas here. I don't think I remember more than one or two times that I've ever seen water even come close to that area. Uh, one time back in eighties, I know. And uh.
Good question. You said that was dirt, dirt, that was food?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay.
Disunderstood, sorry.
No, that 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 peninsula at one time was a wet, that was a, was an open meadow. Open field, it's grown back in. So what we're going to try to do is recreate that meadow area in the back to kind of reproduce the habitat that's been lost over the years. So by bringing the driveway back into the back, we've allowed three buildings in the back.
I am going to try to find the elevations to share. This may take. So for those watching, I'm going to do my best.
But the elevation of the four story building, the story building is just one story less. But they are using mixed uh, materials along the front. These areas are glassed and there's stairways that come upstairs. There's balconies within certain units, she approved. There's going to be a mix of a shekel hardboard. I used to, unfortunately, have a lot of colored red green, a lot of colored red, so you can see that area. But the buildings are, would be located until the front went to termite here and this way they could trend this way. And as Tim mentioned, there is the ever source head design system that we're using in this area, which has kept all these buildings out. Uh, for this residential component, a hundred and six units, traditionally with two spaces per unit, comes up with two delivery, twelve parking spaces. Uh, we've talked to Maureen and Detective Hudson, Don's assessment, potentially the issue should look at uh, having us allow us to defer parking in such a way that we actually reduce them. Mr. Paul wants to have the spaces and it's said, before it comes out, it's said three spaces opposed toward it. Well, everyone asked, we'd be in relation to potentially reduce some of those parking spaces. Now, we did, if we had a condition or situation, we still can put the two, two hundred and twelve parking spaces in. What we'd love to do is include some of these. Actually, those are, I'll get the power lines and help us remove those parking spaces. We can build all this as well. Uh, storm drainage, we're using existing storm drainage coming through the existing driveway. Uh, those are just, we're on discharge points and each one of those points we're putting, we're all grid separators in each of some areas. So we're going to actually do some of the sediment that enters the river. Uh, we've got a large innovation area that takes place with the power lines here. We're going to try to replicate that innovation area by putting the separate whole flow here. This drainage that comes from the back, we're separating that. And for all the appropriate surfaces, we've got a stormwater hat that we're developing through that. That's the buildings we wanted to have a discharge back within that back area. And all we're, we're showing two hundred and sixty four spaces. Again, and that would be potentially reduced by fifty cell spaces with the reduction of parking within the uh, within the residential component, but we're, we're happy to work with staff on that, find the right locations because we want those spaces to be evenly distributed between all the buildings. We don't want to take all the spaces here, you know, reduce those spaces, so it's out of the parking for all the buildings. That's a good truth. Uh, we are providing some other amenities for this, for this site. Uh, we are proposing a walkway that comes up through the termite, the response service in the termite. If we want to be able to utilize the termite bus service. So we are proposing a sidewalk from this area out of the termite. That walkway can be used at least uh, for customer buses, possibly if a resident is a member of one of these businesses. Uh, again, part of some of the mechanics we've received is we're going to look at standard sidewalk systems individually in each one of those two units, so people have the ability to walk within the site. Uh, that walkway from here, you just said, that was about six hundred and fifty feet or about two football fields. We've also provided a uh, a pass system that would work its way around through the back of the site. Uh, that would be gravel, the surface walkway. Uh, that's about a thousand linear feet. Uh, so with the walkway here and the walkway around, we basically have a walking loop of a little over half mile within the development if somebody wanted to take advantage of all the uh, the walkways. We've also provided two connection points. I know Maureen and I have talked a little bit of this, I don't know if she's been able to find that master plan. But our intent is that if the town ever develops further uh, walkways along the kind of road property in this location, we can be able to tie those walkways in and extend those path systems into the uh, to a master plan that they may have. I know sportsmen pond is located right here, so this would make a very good fishing spot right here and then this walkway here. Unfortunately, our only frontage along the river is only in this area and that's where we're providing our medication. So we do have rather limited uh, frontage along the river, the rest of the river. And of course, there was rotation. As, as I mentioned, we did go through wetlands with this. None of our impacts had direct impact within our wetland system. We did have approximately uh, approximately sixty three thousand square feet of upwind review. Also, that review where at least half of it was part of that road entrance system and the rest of it itself was some more management to the side. But that was all against rules. Uh, we are providing an excess of about seven cubic yards of additional flood storage that happens at the present time. So uh, that's positive, and I think the wetlands saw that. The uh, the medication benefits will improve flood storage. Uh, will add diversity to the habitat within the area. And we are looking to maintain our shedding of the brook. So even though we want to have an open meadow, we are only to mark trees along the river to maintain the shedding, so we're not impacting uh, temperatures along the river to uh, to disturb the three eyed growing carp that live in the river. Um, there have been some comments made and we have gone through them. I just want to basically touch base briefly with the comments. Uh, Far Marshall is looking for a couple of extra hundreds, one hundred up on a ceiling and another item. Down in this location, we've got no problem with uh, providing those to the water control commission. There's an existing twenty inch uh, RCP water main that's kind of failed and needs to be replaced. We're replacing with a sixteen inch DNP. So we will make the connection back in there. There is also an existing sanitary sewer within that area. There is a provision for this building, we connected this ABC tools are connected. And there is a stub located in this area that we're tying into, so we're not going to make any connections in the uh, the trunk sewer, but all these buildings are, will be hooked up to sanitary sewer and public water. Uh, there is an actual right of pathway that the town uses or the town has, the termite along the immediate edge, which is really overgrown and uh, it's inaccessible for most vehicles. What they do is they use our existing driveway and our parties, the buildings are wood lined. That they use in the watershed, then we will work with the town, water control to allow them access, better access into their uh, into the tanks and the drinking water at the same time. Uh, some of the other comments here, flooding wetlands, they have a track pad. Uh, parking the frog, we will be talking about that. Uh, there was a comment about a fitness trail along the river. Again, we don't really have any place along the river to make the connection, how they discharge back up along the road. And I haven't seen what, what the consultant might have come up with the town property back in there. They were talking about fitness devices and paths and benches. We weren't happy to set some of those equipment or stations along our footpath area. But we just want to talk to our client to make sure that what he's proposing. Uh, Mr. Paul had also had some comments uh, within the site. And uh, he was looking for some more robust landscaping, plantings along the entry road, which we will look at and we will add. Uh, he had some questions about two bedroom use, uses, which we will be looking at. Uh, connectivity, some questions, we talked about that. Uh, basic plan he was looking for for construction, we'll buy the town with that. Uh, he wanted us to look at the dumpsters that we have proposed and wanted to see if that was going to be enough dumpsters or which is worth in different locations. So we want to look at that plus provide a detail for screening of those dumpsters. Uh, he was looking at maybe some outdoor seating for some of the residents to look at. So we will look at, maybe we can put some patio areas or gazebo or something, someplace on the site that kind of makes that a little more uh, uh, amenable to the residents. Uh, crosswalks, no problem adding those, no pile locations, no problem adding those loading zones, no problem. And we provide a lighting plan. Again, Mr. Paul's comments are are rather encouraging from the standpoint of his uh, endorsement of the uh, the type of project. And we will, and he said, we, you know, are willing to work. We are willing to work with the town to kind of make this a better project. And we'll, as Tim mentioned, once we start getting comments back and we hear the commission's concerns and questions, uh, we will then modify these plans, incorporate all the provisions, and we'll go through there. So I think that's all I have to say. Uh, Tim?
Yeah, Bart, let me just address real quick. Um, Don also mentioned a hundred and six units may not be supported by the number of acres.
Yeah, there was a question about the acreage on the property uh, as opposed to what we're proposing for units. Uh, what is not taken into account is there's a small property up in this location that's going to be added to the back property that gives us our required frontage, just part of the zoning. And that gives us enough acreage on our property to support on six units. And we will uh, better state that on the plan. So it's obvious that the uh, the acreage and the density all match up perfectly.
Thanks, Bart. Uh, I just asked, I would ask Brian Miller, I know he's still on.
Yeah.
Brian, if maybe you could review your housing, the formal housing report?
Uh, yes, I am here.
And that's as revised, he, the supervisor revised report following his discussion with Don Paulin. Go ahead, Brian.
Good evening, everybody. Madam Chair, Mr. Commission, I'm Brian Miller, the Miller Planning Group in uh, based in Wallingford, Connecticut. Um, as you know, I was asked to prepare the housing affordability plan, uh, which is prepared in accordance with the standards of uh, eight dash thirty G. Um, am I able to put something on the screen here? Is it there?
Yeah, hold on, did you send it to me?
Well, no, I have it on in my.
Okay, you can share it, you should be able to share.
Well, it's up now, how do I share?
Um, at the bottom of your screen, it should, where the, your toolbar is, it should say share screen.
Okay. I got it.
And then you make sure you hit the the bottom corner that says share. Once you pull it up on your screen.
All right. We said.
There you go, perfect.
Thank you. Um, now, um, as Bart suggested, uh, that, that there's thirty two affordable housing you um, in the property, sixteen um, reserved for those with less than um, eighty percent of the median family income and the other sixteen reserved for those with less than uh, sixty percent of the family median income. So we had to start with the family median income. This is the twenty twenty one. Um, the, actually, my report was prepared in twenty twenty one in December and uh, but um, the twenty twenty two data has not come out. And as I've emphasized before, uh, the, these numbers are, are only good for a point in time. And uh, they are updated in various ways annually. So um, this, this is good, but um, it provides the template, was intended to provide by the template um, for future calculations and determinations of, of what the, who's eligible for renting a, as well as um, what the rental prices would be. Um, as you could see, uh, there were four categories here, one in, both one and two bedroom and each had sixty percent and eighty percent. And I've, I think you've, you were able to go through the methodology here. And you can see for the one bedroom at sixty percent, uh, the maximum rent based on certain assumptions would be one thousand one hundred and four dollars. And for the two bedroom at sixty percent, it'd be one thousand three hundred and twenty five dollars. Again, those, those are based on certain allowances for utilities. Um, when the apartments are built, they might provide a different uh, uh, group of utilities that is included in the rent or less. But this is based on that they would cover heat and water and the tenant would pay for electricity and cooking. Again, that's, that's based on assumptions that we don't know what the end product will be at this point. We now have at the eighty percent, the one bedrooms, uh, and we have the uh, maximum monthly rent at one thousand four hundred and eighty eight dollars for the one bedroom. And for the two bedroom, we're at one thousand seven hundred and eighty seven dollars, which is, which is, I think, probably pretty close to the um, market rate. Now, we also, um, it's kind of make it all more understandable is to have the phase construction uh, so that there will be a, enough finished units to um, that, at each time, that would um, be a, that you have the, the same, the required minimum ratios of affordable housing. And of course, this had to be done because there's three buildings, so it had to be done in accordance with the three buildings. Uh, again, um, it doesn't really matter the order that these are in because they keep, they keep it balanced throughout the construction. I assume building one, I, well, I put building one as being constructed first. It doesn't have to have, happen that way. But when it's constructed, it needs to have twenty seven, it needs to be six, um, affordable at sixty percent and six at eighty percent. Now, when I um, submitted the original draft, I, I got several comments from Dr. Paulin. And uh, one of them was the location of the affordable units. And it being a rental, I had uh, stated that there would be, um, there would, the requirements, uh, maximum number on each floor and that type of thing. And, and Don suggested that I get more um, specific on that. So what you have here is um, the location of the affordable units. And we also had a uh, how it would be broken down by, on each floor. So um, a maximum six units to be located on each individual floor. So i- this way, it So i- i- this way, it, we, we ensure that they're spread throughout the whole um, development. But we also, I, I think it, unlike if you're creating units for sale, which if it's created, it'll be deep restricted forever and ever. The um, there's more fluidity in how, where they're going to be located. Uh, for example, it, um, the units will all be comparable to each other. So they, they'll be indistinguishable, an affordable unit from a market unit. But um, it, it, the actual having a little bit of flexibility there would enable um, the uh, management of the, of the uh, complex to um, ensure that um, if there's an empty apartment, it doesn't necessarily have to be designated as an affordable apartment if they get a potentially affordable tenant. So it, it's um, it provides a lot of flexibility, yet I think it's specific enough that uh, going along with the spirit of the rules, not to concentrate uh, all the affordability, elderly affordable units in, in, in like one part of a complex. So it distributes it and ensures there's not too many on each floor. So I, I think that goes along with the spirit of it. Now, we also had um, when um, I um, originally spoke with Don, uh, my original um, copy said that um, the uh, entity responsible for managing uh, the affordability component would be selected um, and with the approval of the Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission. And Don reminded me, and I had forgotten this, that um, that Berlin, at least way back when, um, was actually doing their affordability um, um, eligibility uh, in staff to the uh, youth, I think it's the youth services or we used to call it human services. Um, and so I, I, in the, the most late, the latest draft, um, you have that. Um, I got a phone call uh, this afternoon from Doug Truitt, who told me that um, they, the town has actually tried to get at us and I guess, um, well, Doug's been there a while because he was there when I was there. So uh, he's uh, thinking that um, the newer developments have actually had their own management. So I, I'm, I would suggest, based on that, that uh, the, with the um, report that I gave you, I'll revise that uh, small section back to what it originally was, is that um, the uh, developer or the manager, owner of the apartments can select somebody um, subject to the approval of the Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission. My, I, that's in fact, like almost every other community I've come in contact with does. So um, with that, um, again, I'll, uh, I, we'll have that back to you before the next uh, public hearing, it's a small change. So um, that is the uh, major uh, factors in the Housing Affordability Plan and happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time, thank you.
A question for the affordable, calculating affordability, Christian woman. Isn't that state appointed or a- a- am I in error? Because I know that whoever you're gonna appoint needs to be, I believe, blessed by the state.
The appointment or the, the calculation?
The, the, the company you hire to do the calculation?
No.
And keep the affordability check?
No, the state has nothing to do with it. I- in fact, that there's a lot of just the kind of general management companies and responding to the growth of these type of projects that have incorporated into their um, tenant uh, selection system. So it's, it's much more common, the state, uh, thankfully, the state doesn't get involved there in it. Or it would take eight months to let, rent an affordable unit. So uh, now this is done and, and, and the actual verification isn't all that difficult. And consists of tax returns and other um, paperwork that similar, you know, if you, if you, actually, if you're looking into getting an apartment in some places and you have to go through a credit check, it's not all that much different. Uh, but there are plenty of people that have learned to do it and are qualified and they, and they need, and of course, the town can monitor at any time it wishes. And I suspect that whoever, if somebody has a beef with it, then they could ask the state to monitor, to look at it as well. So it seems to be working, thankfully, without the, the grubby fingers of the state in it at this point.
Any other questions?
No, I mean, for the other. Portions of the application.
Sure.
And so when considering the quality of life and the, very off, uh, earlier they mentioned, you know, in line with other projects that we, through the street. Um, one thing that I liked about that, that they had a community center for the residents of the development. It had a pool, a lounge, all that. Um, all I'm seeing on this application is a really short little. Say sixty, sixteen hundred feet, but six hundred is walking towards the highway. Uh, so I'm wondering, what aspects does this have, the quality of life for the residents?
Uh, yeah, no, uh, this is a, a much more streamlined project, as I stated, much more smaller version of that previous project, with same mixed use components. Wow, um, there are, there are not a lot of amenities on this project. Uh, we've acknowledged that in our conversations. Already mentioned some of the amenities we're trying to work in. But it's a very, it's a very difficult, it's a very difficult site. Um, uh, it doesn't have the total acreage of the, of the project of the street. It, it, it sits in a hall, it's, it's hampered by uh, ever source transmission lines, a town, a pump station. So what we're trying to do is make the best of a very difficult piece of property. And trying to enhance it as much as possible, as Bart said. Uh, we, we are providing a lot of flood storage. Uh, we're trying to recreate the flood, uh, a wetlands area, um, which would protect the rivers. So our, our amenities are trying to enhance the river to a great degree. If and when the town um, has a, a proposal to try to get some river access there, I know, uh, like Bart and Morgan were talking about, there is, there is a plan out there somewhere. Uh, we want to see it, uh, we'll provide some access into that area. If and when that uh, walking trail, town's trying to develop with the continuous piece of property. But it's a very difficult project. We're, we're trying to enhance the river. Um, Russell has some small little amenities here, we can increase these amenities. And as we stated with, whether the workouts type of things or whatever, along, along the western border. But there's not a lot we can do with this property.
So one thing I just, when I looked at the BPD overlay, uh, I thought it's something to give land owners and developers a way to, you know, make the most of their land. Yes, um, we're supposed to have that commercial aspect uh, in the front ditch for the first, I believe. There was also supposed to be quality house, not just housing. And what I'm seeing with this application is just houses. So when we talk about the amenities, I think we should really look into trying to figure out maybe gyms for building or something like that. Because right now, this doesn't really ideal to the characteristic of what we're looking for in the BPD overlay.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll consider that. Obviously, we're going to talk with our client after this. And so all the, you know, suggestions by the commission and by, and by Mr. Paulin. But once again, I have to emphasize that, that it's a very, very difficult site. Um, and uh, and it's gonna, it, it, it'll reflect on the rent server charge, um, in terms of the. These are property, um, as a state non-street. Um, but we're making the very best of a very difficult site. So we are seeking, based on our conversation with Bart, we are seeking to enhance the amenities and some levels as part of the to where.
Mr. Zerabozo. Mr. Zerabozo, so that's kind of further, Mr. Rose, only trying to hold minor things. Um, one, you mentioned that the uh, power lines uh, run through that area. How close um, are those towers and power lines to the actual residential structures?
I'm not sure if they're closest tower. Uh, I'm not sure.
You want me to bring up the GIS?
Yeah.
You're probably, Bart, you're probably about two, two or fifty feet. This is the master plan, and this is really the closest building. The, the towers are back on the other side of the park, you want that to hear. So that's probably one, two, three, four, five, location. The rest of the towers run to this location on the uh, on the northern side, with the larger tower line, uh, that's stuck with the pole. These are basically uh, elevated poles, but these towers, this one tower here, and this is the tower offside.
So do you know the approximate, uh, height of the transmission wires and how far those wires are? Residential, uh, buildings?
I don't, but I can come back and get that information. Let's give you an accurate number.
Thank you. Uh, and a second minor point, uh, you mentioned a bus stop, that's the dimensions of the property. Um, to my knowledge, um, you would probably have to create some type of um, cut-in or something for the bus because uh, CD train buses are not going to stop on the turnpike, the discharge or um, without passengers. They won't even do that on the chairman highway at any point other than one designated area. So that's also something to consider if you're going to use a bus stop or suggest that it wouldn't produce.
Yeah, no, I was going to, because I wanted to, the commission wanted to.
The other question I was asking this morning, the BTT zone. I thought the maximum type was special.
You have a heart bat in the mouth, but uh, I don't have my figures, that's a pipe out.
She's looking at the BTT zone, the height of the buildings. I thought we said that four floors.
I, I think that will, is what we have. I think that's what's been approved, but I'll double check the right.
That's all right, that was my one concern. My second concern is just to do, I want, Mr. Morgan saying that, and Mr. Zerabozo is that it doesn't seem to be a lot happening back there. I also question, um, just the, I keep thinking about that ABC tools is right there. And so you're gonna have the ABC tools, then you have parking for the, the units, and then you have the units. So their view is really gonna be at the rooftop of ABC tools, the wires. I, I.
It's gonna be the back of this building. This is only about a one-story building. It's not a very tall building next year. And then, yes, we are gonna have the power lines in this location, but these units will hook out the back, on the backside of the building. At this point, will be tucked in between the units, so.
And, and please understand that my comments directly, it's not that I'm opposed to the method of housing that you're going in, it's just that we really want it to be pretty. We really want it to be attractive housing. And I, I really want, I don't want to drive down the Berlin turnpike and have to look the other way because I'm embarrassed and I voted on, you know what I'm trying to say? And I don't want it to look like anything but top shell housing. And then, and so it's a tough development that you have because you're fighting against so many issues. You're fighting against the ABC tools being there, uh, you're fighting against the power lines, you have the wetlands. And I know that we're trying to, we're trying to get out of it. And so I, I support you with that, but um, I, I'm just trying to come to terms with the amount of units that are in there.
We can definitely look at the building, and I apologize if I haven't.
No, Bart, it has nothing to do with that. What I'm just saying is I'm looking for top.
I understand.
And I know that you're gonna do the Hardy board and all the stuff.
I, I hear you. And we'll bring that back to the client.
With architecturals too, because it's gonna be, it's gonna be hard to sell the project to renters. I, I'm sure the affordable ones will hop right in there, but your market value ones, and that's what's really gonna support the project. So on that, I want it to, you know, something, a cut above.
Yeah, this is targeted for young, raw, you know, the types of developers and older people. But there's not a lot of amenities. We don't look attractive, the renters are here, driving by the, uh, driving by the turnpike, you gotta look here, over top of. The, all these, we'll be attractive. It might be an eyesore. Financial housing, well, you should have known, known many, that you know, professional, you're older, and you just want to think the answer that I'm leaving it.
And I'm just gonna go back over the affordability, uh, and I'll do this for, just for the sake of the commission because I know that when we first started talking about affordability, a long, long time ago, Bart, you were around, it came like a year or two. It was, it was difficult with the mathematics to try to figure out, how much money does a person need to make to be able to get into, you know, affordable? So what you're saying is that, or Brian was saying, I guess, is that, um, it's a, and Brian, I worked with you on this as well. Um, so what you're saying is that you have the median income per year for a family of four, which is like a hundred and four thousand dollars right now. Right, or somewhere around there?
Right, right. And, and these, these numbers come from the state.
Yeah, I know, and, and difficult at best. And because it's ever fluctuating, it's an F. And um, but I guess what I'm saying is, so they have to make eighty percent of that.
Less or less?
Or.
Or less?
Or less.
Right, so.
Yeah, so.
So that would be.
Looking for exact numbers, so they maybe have.
Oh, we, we got them here, we got them here. The exact number is, well, it's also adjusted by a, um, the family size. So um, when you have a, a one-bedroom, um, they, they, there's a certain assumption and uh, and I, so you only, you take seventy-five percent of that. Now, just here, be the, um, a- and I should have covered this, I apologize, but for.
Don't worry about that, I'm kind of like, I'm just sort of.
Well, I can give you the numbers now, Joan. If, if you'd like the num, if you, if you like, if you would like for the numbers, I could give them to you right now.
Okay, that'd be.
They're, they're on here. Um, the um, the one uh, bedroom um, would um, the, the uh, sixty percent number would be forty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy. The um, the, for the um, sixty percent two-bedroom, it would be uh, fifty-five thousand, four hundred and four dollars. This is the annual income. For the, at the eighty percent level, um, it would be sixty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty for the one-bedroom units. And at the uh, two-bedroom, which would, um, it, at the eighty percent, it would be an annual income of seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two. So what, I mean, you're, you're, you're talking about that, that people come in, they certainly need, um, and, and those, and that also will be, you know, when I did the initial presentation, I indicated what the rents would be, and they're directly tied to what those income numbers are. They're part of the algorithm when you go through it. So i- if um, you, you're still talking about uh, working families. And, and the reality is, because the rents are where they are, that there's not going to be too many people that are way below those numbers. You, you're, you're likely to get, um, for example, maybe a, a young family where one of the people uh, doesn't work and the other one does, you know, that type of situation.
Yeah, I just wanted to, because I, as I had said before, we have newer members, and I just wanted to. Yeah, I just wanted to, because I, as I had said before, we have newer members, and I just wanted to sort of have you go through that process so that they would know how the affordable. calculation works.
Appreciate that. That's why I'm here.
No problem, thanks. All right, any other commissioners, Kevin? Yes, Tim.
And we don't have all the reference yet. But my suggestion is you don't have the amenities that you can put on this spot. I do recommend that, that you upgrade lighting. You know, old New England lighting, the siding, when you said Hardy board, wide board, wide board around the windows. Whatever, looking for that old New England taste with those long sidewalk you got. Putting the overhang lights, you know, bell, bell lights like over, over the sidewalks. Maybe doing stamped sidewalks, so bricks stamped sidewalks, something like that. That will bring the class up. Without. The amenities, you know.
Good question, is there? Because I'm, I don't, the back of the project room where the housing is, is there a pathway that goes out to Woodlawn at all?
No, there's no access way at all.
There's no access.
The town uses, yeah, to use a driveway, an access, okay, but there is no.
So there's no walking path that would take to Woodlawn?
No.
I was thinking it'd be great if we could work out something with a power house gym where they would offer a discount, you know, for your membership, because these folks can walk right out and walk right over. You know? So business helping the business, yeah. But anyway, I just thought, yes.
You still have some questions, but I have a couple of answers or comments to kind of bring things together if I can, by your choice. Yeah, don't.
Just to finish up, we got the traffic report everywhere.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Can I hit real quick on? Just while you're talking about them, so you don't have them hanging. So the maximum number of stories is four stories if the building is a minimum of a hundred feet from a residential zone. So four stories is permitted. Bart referenced a report, the commission, the, the town recently had a consultant do a report for the potential for walking trails in the Sportsman Pond area. On that open space area that they're talking about to the west of this property. Excuse me, one second. Um, it is definitely dry in this building. So we're working on going through that report, looking for access points. It is true that the access off of Woodlawn is privately held and used. So public access from that location is not. Necessarily confirmed, although it would be the most ideal location. And whether or not there's an ability to link any potential walking trails within Sportsman Pond to this project is still being looked at. And whether or not perhaps even this project, if that was to be something done now or in the future with it being a property owned by the town that's adjacent. If there's some ability for public access through their property would be something to consider. And the Conservation Commission is also making comments on that that will be included in a report subsequent to this. Um, I wanted to note before they got much further, because we didn't get the chance to say earlier in the meeting that the engineering consultant was unable to join today and his meeting, his, his report was not finalized and still working with Bart on some drainage. Numbers and calculations. However, he will listen to this entire presentation and expects his report to be able to be issued to the commission sometime next week. But knows this will be on video online, so he'll. But he apologized for having conflict. We, it, we, we have, there's a bunch of access points that have all been identified, and the consultant walked the parcel to see if there were places you can't get from point A to point B, if you use them and, and the terrain. So there's a lot to that, and I can make copies of that report and distribute it to you guys if you'd like. So.
All right, and now, Kevin, you want your question. Yeah, I guess it goes back to some of the comments that were talking about amenities and noise, understanding that one project that was up the road, gymnasium, swimming pool, et cetera. But I also understand the fact that, you know, you're going to have a higher rent when you do that as well. But one of the things that maybe would be beneficial, and I don't know how you could do it, you know, within it, but one of the things that I know. Let's say you have an elderly couple that, you know, lives there, you know, kids have moved off and they're empty nesters, they downsize. Or, you know, a smaller family with, with a child just starting out. One of the things I think that would be attractive to them is to have some type of area within the buildings. I'll call it a community area or something like that. Whereas let's say they want to have a, a party for their child or anniversary party where they can have, you know, more family members over than in the unit. That's something that might be attractive and beneficial, so it doesn't have, you know, a lot of stuff within it. Maybe a little kitchen area or something that they could utilize. And then the other thing I'm thinking for outdoors is maybe a little, again, a placebo area or something that they can use for those type of functions. Where, you know, it still gives them a sense of community rather than just being in a, in a building.
We're going to try to incorporate as much as possible, make this a better design.
I, you know. Brought up the, the looking back into A B C. You look into the back of the building, there those are. Steel buildings. And they're not attractive. But I don't know, seeing that project is together, if there's a way to make those buildings attractive. Either vinyl or Hardy boredom or, or something that, that will make them more attractive and steal new buildings. You know, I don't know what that cost would be, but I'm sure to improve the project and the sellability or rental of the project. Were amped up a little bit.
Yeah. Had to break it up with some screen.
Yeah, or screen in or, or, you know. Yeah, it's a heavy, heavy landscape, it's any fencing, whatever, whatever you can do to break that up.
If you could just like add that into the, the map there, it's a little better idea of where the landscaping, sidewalks, crosswalks. You know, not only is quality of life important, but safety.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so now we'll move on to, I guess, on to the traffic.
Mark Vertucci is with us, and ask that Mark could just review his traffic impact study.
Will do. Good evening, everyone. Mark Vertucci, again, I'm a senior transportation engineer at Fussin O'Neil, one forty six Hartford Road in Manchester. Also registered professional engineer and professional traffic operations engineer as well. Fussin O'Neil did prepare a traffic impact study for this development. Just want to briefly describe findings here for you this evening. Just going to share my. See if I can share my screen here. I'm not seeing. Do I have the ability to share here?
Um, yeah, you should be able to describe it. I may have to change it to multiple because Brian did, but no one can share at a time. He's not letting you.
Nah, I'm just not seeing the P D, now let's see here. Oh, there it is, okay. All right, yeah, this is just a site location map here, just to orient you to the site. So site is located, again, on the west side of the turnpike, north of the Woodlawn Road, Worthington Ridge intersection. And then south of Demming Road, which is State Route one sixty to the east. So as part of our study, we did analyze those two signalized intersections. And then obviously, we also looked at the existing A B C driveway as well. So the site's got good, good access to the turnpike, good access to the signals to the north and south, Route nine as, as well. Is just south of the site. There is U-turn capability at both of the signalized intersections, north and south of the site. Obviously, there's a median through there, so you can only go right in and right out. But left turns, attending access to site can utilize the, those traffic signals to the north and to the south. So we did conduct a, a traffic counts at each of these three study intersections. They were done back in, very early in March of twenty twenty, so they were pre-COVID shutdown. So that, you know, the volumes are good, they were approved by the D O T. And those counts indicated the peak hours out there are seven thirty to eight thirty in the morning, four fifteen to five fifteen in the afternoon. So those are the, you know, the highest peak hours that we, we analyzed in this, in this study. We took those counts from twenty twenty, we grew them to the current twenty twenty two design year using a one growth rate, which was provided by the D O T as well.
Mark, excuse me, you're faded out there for a moment. Just the last sentence.
Sorry about that. I just mentioned that we, we grew the counts, the twenty twenty traffic counts to the current design year, twenty twenty two, using a one growth rate, which was provided by the D O T. For the traffic generated for this site, we utilized rates in the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, which is an industry accepted resource for determining traffic generation. Use the mid-rise multifamily housing land use, and then also the convenience market land use to generate the trips. And what, what we found is this development will generate fifty one entering and sixty seven exiting new trips. In the morning peak hour and in the afternoon peak hour, fifty nine entering and fifty exiting new trips. And it's important to note here that, you know, with the, the retail use, it's going to be a significant number of pass by trips. This is, you know, traffic that's already on the turnpike, they're, they're going to turn in to the, you know, to the, the retail use. And then, you know, continue on. So it's a, it's a car that's already on the road network, it's not really a new trip that's being generated. So we, there's, based on I T guidance, so we, we utilized a fifty one percent pass by rate here for that retail use. And we also took a ten percent capture credit, and that's just to account for residences who will, residents who will use the, the convenience market, just because it's right there on the site. And there's going to be a sharing of, of use there as well. There, we, we did conduct a capacity analysis at our study intersection. So we compared the twenty twenty two background condition, this is without the development traffic, to the twenty twenty two combined or build condition with the development traffic. When we conduct our analysis at intersections, as you, you may know, the analysis rates them on a level service scale from A to F, for core card type scale. A is efficient operation, F is high delay, and level service D is typically considered, D or better is considered acceptable by the Department of Transportation. So what the analysis showed was our site driveways will operate acceptably at level service D or better during both of the peak hours. The Woodlawn Worthington Ridge intersection also operated at level service D or better and will continue to do so after the inclusion of the development traffic. The Demming Road, one, Route one sixty intersection, that operates with more significant delay, that was an F, but that is an existing condition. And when we look at the amount of traffic we're adding there, it's a, it's a very, very small increase in delay that we're adding to that intersection. And also the queues that we looked at in general throughout the, the study network, we're, we're only adding about vehicle, one to two vehicle lengths to, to the queues of these signals at most. So not a, a significant increase there either. I did want to point out, the Department of Transportation has a signal project that is under design on the Berlin Turnpike. They're replacing fifteen traffic signals throughout the quarter. They're adding adaptive signal technology and connected vehicle technology. So this, you know, these signals, when they are constructed, which should probably be, be a few years down the road. It will certainly increase the, the capacity and the efficiency of traffic operations along the turnpike with that improved technology and equipment. So that will benefit, you know, traffic from this site as well. Two more things we looked at from a safety perspect, perspective, we looked at intersection site distances coming out of the site driveways. And those were measured to exceed one thousand feet. You can see a long distance out to the north there when you're, when you're exiting. So the site distances exceed D O T criteria for safe egress. We also looked at the three, three latest years of available crash data from the Yukon Crash Repository at our study intersections. And we did not find any abnormal crash patterns that we would not expect to see on a, on a signalized arterial roadway such as the turnpike. There were no fatalities reported in the study area in those three years. And most importantly, there were no crashes that we saw coming into or out of the site driveway. So that has been shown to be operating safely. So just to conclude the findings of our study, this proposed fixed use retail residential development is not anticipated to have a significant impact to traffic operations on the Berlin Turnpike or the study intersections. And it is our opinion that development traffic can be safely and efficiently accommodated on the adjacent road network. So with that, I can take any, any questions you might have.
I have one.
Go ahead, Mr. Rosen.
Just to be clear, so the only way to enter the property would be going south. The turnpike, and only way to leave it would be going south, there wouldn't be a cut through, go north or stop light or anything like that?
That's correct, yes, it's right out, right in, right out only. Yeah, I think it would be difficult to get the D O T to approve a median curb cut there. But as I mentioned, there is U-turn capability at the traffic signals to the north and south, there's left turn lanes. And, you know, vehicles can circle back in, in that fashion.
Well, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm, I'm at the, I know that Tom brought, the Bronx Police Department has, so. Think about the intersections of Woodlawn and Demming Road, Demming Road especially, it's been a high crash area. And Woodlawn has been. Your dad is a little slow on that, catch, catch up. But there also is going to be another cut across at the new development north of this. Get another light that across or a turnaround going south. That hasn't been studied because you use Dermont and the road. Woodlawn, those, that potential intersection's got to be studied and find out what that's going to be in U-turns of those six. The other thing is the driveway or A B C. When I, on an angle before. And the trucks get on angles, get on the highway on an angle. Now you've got a T, and the trucks are going to come out and have to go across two lanes basically to, to get onto South Farm. That's another part of the study that I think should be. Worked out, figured out. The other thing is that when you're going out that entrance and going towards Woodlawn, it's going to be another entrance like coming out of St. Leonard's. And this don't want to go on to Sheldon Street. Okay, you've got to cross two lanes in order to get to turn lane to do the U E. Okay, is there enough space between that? Exit and do the, to switch two lanes and go to the U E. That, that's, that's. That, that's, that's going to be a, a conflict there. From the big vehicle, I myself, I noticed these have conflict all the time. Uh, so um, those two things, the, the new potential, uh, at the complex or there. The crossing two lanes over to the U-turn, uh, and the trucks coming out of there, the trucks coming out there. That's got to be addressed. It may, it may be with a widening of uh, the turnpike of a approach lane and onto the turnpike like Stu Leonard's, they're dividing the road there. And then you can get into like a lane and then slowly get over. Okay, so that may be addressed.
Acceleration lane, a short acceleration lane, is what you're referring to.
Short acceleration lane to get, you know, those trucks are coming out there pretty fast, aren't fast coming up that hill and then coming up the highway.
Yeah.
Just before Sandy, just because we're talking about that, that we only have the one entrance way, so that's going to be the feeder for the apartment stand for ABC. So how wide is that road going to be? Is it just fifty-five feet or something? Your entrance, yeah, your, your driveway.
I believe the driveway's twenty-six or twenty-eight, you'd have to look at it. But it's pretty much a, a standard town road at the present time coming into the site. There's nothing extra wide or direction narrow about it.
I'm just. Okay, Sandy.
Yeah, just to kind of dovetail on it, my, you know, my concern isn't as much of the trucks crossing the, the two lanes to make the swing out of there, which they will. If it's a, you know, an eighteen-wheeler, they're going to need that. But as was alluded to, it's the speed that they're going to need to catch up to that. Um, you know, the way the driveway current, it currently is, they have that little bit of wave where as they're coming up, they can kind of accelerate and kind of cascade on because they have that little bit of a, a turn on there where now it's going to be straight up. Um, and the concern I have is when they're pulling out onto the, onto the Berlin Turnpike, the slowing down of the traffic flow that's going to be on there. Because it will take them, you know, a good quarter to half mile to get up to speed on this.
That might be better way, because the trucks will look northbound, they're coming out of there.
Have a little more time to look.
And, and, and judge traffic and get a little bit of speed up before they get on the road.
Mark, can you talk a little bit about gapping between the, uh, created, the two lights from Demming Road and Woodlawn Road and maybe that additional, I'm just thinking out loud here, that additional curb cut may improve the gap situation and also may improve the Woodlawn Road where people coming into this site don't have to make the U back, but they can do it on a shorter timeframe.
Yeah, I just, um, just to clarify, the cut through you're talking about, um, on this, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. The cut through to the north is going to be in this area or is that?
Yes, right.
Yes, basically right there.
Probably about where the O is in cross is what I'm thinking.
Sewer, sewer thing is they're just north of sewer thing.
Right in that area, I.
Is that, yeah. Is that, is that, that's not south of Demming Road though, is it?
Yes, south of Demming Road.
Yes, okay.
Right there, stay right there, Mark.
I think the also, the nice thing about the way it's set up now is that when cars are on the off the turnpike, they won't have to slow down to almost five miles per hour to take the turn. They won't get hit in the back, they won't back up traffic here.
Was there a reason why they went away from current entrance and exit?
Well, as we were trying to work out the entrance, we didn't feel the bringing of residential property through the, uh, the center of the commercial parking lot. It was a wise idea, but keep a separate connection. So we were kind of looking for solution. I should also say that that curb cut is going to have to get reviewed by, by the state, so. Yes, the state wants the acceleration lanes, acceleration lanes, wants to see a pull-off for a bus. They will have the ultimate say on what's being proposed there. And I don't know, Mark, if you've run that by, by them, or maybe we can get them to have an advanced look at it, give some comments on that.
Yeah, that's a, I was going to mention, that's a good point, Bart. So, and this, this development is, uh, is going to be subject to, um, post-state traffic administration review, but not only there, them, but also the district office will review it during the inclusion process. We're going to have multiple levels of, of state review here, but we, no, we have not, um, run this by, uh, the DOT yet for, for initial comment.
I think, I think it's concerned as much as moving the road as to the entrance and exit onto the turnpike. It's might be the wire. And I think that's more because of the business portion of it.
Right.
What you said, an acceleration, deceleration. But, uh, this is a, this is a, this project is a work, is a work in progress.
We understand.
With the amenities and what, we'd like to feedback, and we're going to make this a good project. I alluded to earlier about the fact that the bus stop and a pull-off area. So this whole area is going to have to be redesigned, I think, working with Mark, uh, working with the idea of providing for a bus stop and acceleration lane and deceleration lane. I'm not sure what it's going to look like, but we've got some work to do.
Yep.
Well, I think we've given like loads to think about.
I think so.
See more, but we'll look at this for now.
Um, I just wanted to comment that the consultant, Don Poland, who provided the report, um, that was in your supplemental packages um, is on, I don't know if he might want to comment as he's joined tonight. Or if it's all written, you know, it may be all there and haven't been discussed, but, um. That's done up in the quarter.
Okay, all right. Uh, Mr. Poland, thank you for joining us. Is there anything that you would like to, uh, comment on at this point before we?
Actually, no, I'm going to refrain from comments at this point. I, I, I think the applicant.
You're very smart, Mr. Paul.
I mean, I, I think the applicant. The applicant did a good job of representing, I think, my report. You guys have it before you with my comments. We did meet, had a good discussion. And I'm anxious to see their revised plans and how they've addressed the issues raised, so. Uh, I thank you and I will be available at the next meeting.
All right, great. And because this is a public hearing, um, I do, so we have some folks online and if anyone wanted to make any comments to the commission either for or against the project at this point, uh, this would be your opportunity to address the commission. Is there anyone from the public wishes to be heard? Okay, hearing none. All right, so, um.
Just for the record, I have extended the public hearing conclusion date. I require a written.
I'm good. All right, so excellent. Yeah, now are we going to, are you hoping to be heard again on February third or are we going on further out with you?
Well, we hope to, we hope to have some revisions by February third.
All right, so. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Womack. Second by Sandy Pocole. Okay, for the special, those in favor, I, I go to move. Okay. And then everything else, no, thank you. Good night, guys. Uh, keep warm this weekend. It's going to be cold. Um, all right, so what's left is we went on to old business, a lot of this is for our postponed, including, uh, explanation by Dan. All righty, uh, planner comments. Let's move on to that. Do you have any comments?
I don't think I have anything today.
Okay, all right, I do have a comment.
I'm sorry. We are, um, yeah, we, we, we moved that to a future. Yes, that, that was a, that was a five-thirty decision that, that no, it had something, but it needs further review.
Okay, um, uh, you know, we come into, uh, as with commissioners, we pour a lot of, you know, a lot of good things into our work and we try to do the best we can as, as individuals. So we try to work as a team and I think we're pretty successful at that. And every now and then a team member decides to move on because they just figure that, you know, they've got to spread their wings a little bit and, and circle on back and we're in hope that he will. I know it was short notice and, uh, originally Steve had contacted me when he informed, uh, me that he was not going to up for reappointment. Uh, we're all pretty sad about this, Dave, because we finally got it all moving in the right direction and, uh.
Pretty a little bit.
They're almost scary, I know, right?
And then the next thing I know, there was a big rumor that he was moving, he had moved out of town and that's why he wasn't putting in for reappointment, which really, really flew like wildfire as he did that. I'm surprised I didn't see it on Berlin Bus. But we were happy to find out he's still in the town, although we will be losing his participation expertise from the commission. So because it was like night thing and then of course you decide in the last minutes to attend this meeting, I'm just going to give you a little something from the commission because we really, really appreciate.
Thank you.
It's just a little token of our thanks. Just to let you know that we truly, really did appreciate everything you've done. Please don't be a stranger and keep in touch and let us know when you want backup.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, all right.
From the large gallery that we have here, I'm sure if there was.
All right, good night, guys. Thank you. How was that? Anyone else want to make a comment or shall we have an adjournment?
Make a motion to a adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Womack. Thank you. G was the second to one. And for the record, it is going to be, excuse me, it's eight thirty-eight.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night, Steve.
Have a good one, Steve.